We'll call to order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, April the 20th at seven o'clock via WebEx conference call, video meeting. And this evening, we're going to be led in prayer by the Honorable Mayor of Greenwood, Mark Myers.
I've been here over ten minutes.
And we're here for ten minutes? Father, we just thank you so much for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come together as a government body, but still one that's brought forward by you. Lord, in this very difficult time, we just pray that you would watch over all of our healthcare workers, our firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, and police officers. Keep them safe through the middle of this pandemic and watch over them and touch them. Father, I just pray tonight that during this meeting that your hand would be upon each one of the council members as they go forward and make decisions to run our city. Thank you for each one of them, and I just pray your blessings upon each one of them. Bless our time tonight, Lord. Help us to all just remember you through all of this time. Bless our city. Keep our citizens safe, Lord. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Roll call.
Bates.
President.
Campbell.
Here.
Dine.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
President.
Pendleton.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum. All of you should have received copies of the minutes from our last regular meeting of April the 6th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine, I believe. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seen and roll call on the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Minutes are approved and vote of nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
The IDM semi-monthly report and the litigation report were all put on SharePoint for your review. If you have questions about either of those, please contact me. I'll be glad to discuss them.
And any questions at this time? All right. Seen none, anything on the controller at this time?
Nothing at this time.
All right. Committee and Board reports. All of you should have received copies of my report from the last RDC meeting. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me or ask me now. Any other committee or board reports? All right. Seen none. We have a special, a couple of special reports this evening. I believe Johnson County Senior Services, their annual contract is up, and I believe someone is here to represent them. I would tell you to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, but if you want to go ahead and start your presentation. Is there anyone here? I thought I saw Jennifer Breberman.
West is present as well.
Anybody wishing to speak about this?
Jenny Breberman keeps muting herself. Jenny, we can hear you now.
Okay. Hello there. First of all, just want to share you all look wonderful in the video conferencing I have on my end. It's really nice to put names and faces together.
Well, thank you.
Yes, I am representing Johnson County Senior Services as the president of the organization. Really take to heart trying to cater to as many seniors in the area of Johnson County. Most notably, I want to share that we made approximately 15,000 transportation runs in 2019. The majority of those, we focus on mainly taking to the doctor appointments, dialysis, which is life-saving trips for them. They have no other family members or anyone else to depend on. And then in addition to that, we also, we do have a food pantry, durable medical goods as far as just anything at all that we might be able to help with in the community. So anyway, we all just really have a passion for what we do.
All right. Any questions for Jennifer? All right. I believe all of you should have received copies of the contract that we have with them each year. The total amount for this year is $15,000. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract with Johnson County Senior Services for the year 2020 for $15,000. I'll make that motion, Mr. Campbell. All right. Motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Lexi.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Normally, we might do this by voice vote, but I've been advised since we're doing this by video conferencing that it's best that we do all of our votes by roll call. So roll call on the contract with the Senior Services.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
The contract with the Johnson County Senior Services just passed on the vote of nine to zero. Is there anyone here from the Johnson County Public Library? Leah, do you know if they decided to come?
I sent her the agenda, which had the meeting information.
Okay. All right. They were, sorry. Do you know her name? Yeah, Bobby Whitmore. Yeah, neither have I. All right. Well, they had wanted to give a report to the council tonight. Since they're not here, we will schedule them for a future council meeting. At this time, we're going to try this audience input time. It's an opportunity for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on the agenda. There's still five-minute time limit for individuals. So if you would like to address the council, now would be the time. And if you're muted, you might need to send a chat to us so we'll know to unmute you.
Mr. President, this is Mayor. I address. Um, 2005 and 2006 for the tax abatement for 1173 Airport Parkway. I just want to say that we've worked with companies before in that area and the businesses that they've built in the past have come forward very well. The jobs have, I believe, the salaries have exceeded that, which is our accounting minimum that we're going by, our median that we're going by. And I would really request an approval by the council on these, this tax abatement on that one. And also, there's a new one that's coming up, 2000, or 20 days, 09, which is a tax abatement for over in front of Alta. And I just want to say that Shear is coming to you tonight with this abatement, and this has been a very difficult piece of property to work with. We've had four other companies attempt to work with it, but none of them could come within the city's request for all of the roadways and all of the infrastructure that needs to put in. And they have finally come with, Shear has come with a building that will actually fit in the area, will also allow access to all the roads that we're requiring through the city with all the easements and right of ways. I think it's a very good project. I think it's a very promising project. And again, I would ask the council to think very strongly about supporting this project.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council at this time? I don't see anybody, so we will move on. There are ordinances and resolutions. There are none under notice of intent considered, none under first reading, or second reading, ordinance 20-10.
An ordinance to establish a community development block grant entitlement program fund sponsored by Gibson, Dine, and Bates.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
By Mr. Dine, was that right?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on ordinance 20-10? Seen none in roll call, second reading, ordinance 20-10.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 20-10 passes second reading, nine zero. Resolution 20-05.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing. 1173 Airport Parkway LLC Phase One, sponsored by Hopper and Campbell.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion, discussion, resolution 2005. Seen none, roll call, second reading, resolution 2005.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye. Resolution 2005 passes second reading, seven to two. Resolution 2006.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing. County Line Properties LLC, 1173 Airport Parkway LLC, Phase Two, sponsored by Hopper and Campbell.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion, resolution 2006? All right. Seen none in roll call, second reading, resolution 2006.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Resolution 2006 passes second reading, seven to two. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 2015.
An ordinance amending Chapter Nine, Article Three, Division One of the Greenwood Municipal Code, 1993, as amended, to add specific regulations regarding stormwater connection and discharge to public sanitary sewers, sponsored by Williams and Gibson. This is an ordinance that we are doing. IDM has made some suggestions that there are language that they'd like to see in our stormwater and sanitary sewer management regulations. We really have the language already, so what we are doing is taking it and putting it in a separate section, the references, so it's easy to find in one place.
All right. Any questions?
This has nothing to do with the fees or anything we charge the public, is it?
No, it does not.
Okay.
All right. Was there a request to suspend the rules on this one?
No.
Okay. All right. Resolution 2007.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of the City of Greenwood, Indiana redevelopment district tax increment revenue bonds of 2020, Series A, Madison Avenue Street Gate and Northwest Trail Project for the purpose of providing funds to be applied for the cost of public infrastructure projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith and paying the costs and expenses arising from the issuance of such bond, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
All right. Anybody want to speak to this?
So, yeah, this is Greg Wright. I'm from the Fry Road district. They would be the funds from that TIF district. As we, we seen the sunset in 2028, 2020, beginning of 2029, what we would like to do with this is finish the Madison Avenue project up the road as well as do the trail, the northwest part, northwest annex with that.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Wright?
That was a question I was going to have, so I appreciate that clarification that all the funding for this will come from the TIF district. And I thank you for clarifying that for me.
I do have one question. This will not extend the life of the TIF district, will it? It'll sun, the bond will sunset?
The bond goes along with the sunset of the TIF. We can't extend the life, so it's going to be designed to have the final payment with the final distribution from the TIF.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Wright? All right. Then resolution 2008.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of the City of Greenwood, Indiana redevelopment district tax increment revenue bonds of 2020, Series B, Forkville Road Project, for the purpose of providing funds to be applied for the cost of public infrastructure projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith and paying the costs and expenses arising from the issuance of such bond, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
This is Greg Wright again, City Controller. So these bonds would be related to the central TIF district. First bonds issued against that TIF district, so that would start the clock on the life of that district. These would be to pay for Section Two of the Worschville Road project that is running from Avert to Honey Creek. This one, the project letting is supposed to be later this year. We'll, oh, to end out on this project, end of November, beginning of December. So that's why we're bringing these bonds to you at this point. We're hoping to take advantage.
Cutting in and out, Greg.
Yeah.
Free pride. That's why we're bringing these bonds to you now.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Mr. Wright, we're having a hard time hearing you. You're cutting in and out.
Okay. I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. We didn't hear hardly anything you said.
So the, this would be on the sin.
You're still cutting in and out.
I think I might have a bad microphone on here. Sorry about that.
That's all right. One of the challenges of this type of meeting.
We'll buy him an iPad.
Yeah. Hey, let me say, I do, since this did come through the RDC and if Mr. Hopper has something he'd like to say, he can. This is, like Mr. Wright said, from the central TIF, one of the first bonds we'll be doing, and it's to fund the expansion of the Worschville Road project from Avert Road over to Honey Creek, which is Section Two. Section Three, which is from US 31 to Avert, is in the process right now, and that will include a roundabout at Worschville and Avert. This Section Two will take that, those two 90-degree turns and make it into a big S curve. You may have seen, if you've driven by there, you've seen the pathway it's going to go, and it'll take it right over to Honey Creek Road, where this will also, my understanding is, will include a roundabout there at Honey Creek and Stones Crossing, which Worschville becomes Stones, or will become Stones Crossing over that area as we make that giant S curve. So any questions about that, Mr. Wright? If you can hear me, have I covered that well, or Mr. Hopper?
I think you did.
All right. One question now I would have, Mr. President, in looking at the resolution as it broke down, there wasn't hardly any detail in reference to.
Has joined the meeting.
What would, what this would entail, other than obviously the basic explanation that was just given. So I don't know if there needs to be more detail involved or not, but.
Actually, I believe what this is, is the state, it's an $11 million project, I believe, for this section, and the state pays most of that. Our portion is a little over $4 million. But before the state will move forward, they just need a commitment from us that we will do our part. So this is really just a commitment to provide the funds so that we can pay our portion of the project. And is that correct, Ms. Coons? Somebody? Okay.
It shows how we're going to provide the funding for it to pay.
So then later down, later down the road in the, in the process, there would be a partnership or there will be a conjunction of engineers by the state as well as our engineer working out the details. Would that be right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right. Seen none, moving on, resolution 20-09.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing. Shear Two through an entity to be formed, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Mr. Sherman, are you here to speak about that?
Yes, I am.
All right. Go ahead.
Before you, you have in your packet, the Shear Group, it's building, they're building C.
I'm sorry, Pat, if you would state your name and address for the record. I think we know who you are. Go right ahead.
Sherman, Compass Point, CPA, 609 Trayborn Drive, Greenwood. In your packet, you had Building C of the Shear Group, Mary Siegler's on the call as well. It's a 338 square foot building, as I said, the one that Mayor discussed. It's some 26 acres at South Point, located at approximately Main Street, just west of Graham Road. There is a, an investment in the property by the Shear Group of $12 million for the building and approximately 1.675 for the land. The SB One indicates that they would like to start the building this early fall, late summer. They are selling a speculative building with 33 employees at eight, excuse me, at 1950 per hour. If you have any questions on the packet that you received, I'd be glad to, to answer those for you.
All right. Any questions for Pat?
I guess, I guess, this is Dave Lexi. I guess the question I have is, do we know more about the user? It's, I know it's a speculative building, it's 300,000 square feet, but if you look at the company's website, it's almost entirely leased already. They're only advertising 70,000 remaining square feet, so they've got one or more users for the existing for 237,000 square feet. So maybe, maybe since the time that they originally applied, they know more about who's going to be in there and what the salaries are going to be. I wonder if we have any update on that.
David, we may have an update by the time we get to the public hearing. Until the abatement is farther down the road, there's really not an indication that it's available. This is just the building, as you might remember, there, there is right of way that goes down the west side of that and then turns to the east on the south side of this property, and that's what has made this so difficult to, to get placed, the cost associated with that roadway that's going on the west side and south side.
Right.
All right. Any other questions?
That's fine. I appreciate that. Okay.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Lexi. Any other questions? All right. There is a request for suspension of the rules through first reading, so I entertain a motion for suspension.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Sorry, second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on suspension? Seen none, roll call on the suspension, resolution 2009 through first reading.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Brad, you're muted. You're muted, Brad. There you go.
Acknowledge, am I right?
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through first reading. Do you have a motion on first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
By Mr. Dine. Any discussion on resolution 2009? Seen none, roll call, resolution 2009, first reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Resolution 2009 passes first reading, seven to two. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. All right. Miscellaneous business. At this time, if you're here watching this meeting and you would like to address the council concerning items that are not on the agenda, you can let us know. We'll try to unmute you and give you that opportunity. There's a five-minute time limit. Anyone? We'll wait just a second. All right. Seen none, then anything from the council miscellaneous business?
Lisa, Lisa would like to speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Lisa, go ahead. State your name and address for the record.
I am muted, hers. There we go. Thank you. I'm Lisa Litner, and I'm the Director of the Johnson County Public Library. And I'm sorry I had problems logging on earlier, but we're, we all have a schedule to put in today. I just wanted to give you a daily report because our Johnson County Public Library Light River Branch is in the Greenwood community. So we come to you once a year and give you an update of the happenstance of our Johnson County Public Library in the White River township area. I shared with the council, and I'm not sure if you're able to see it on the screen or not, but I'm sure you can email it to me later, to a photograph of our district from 2019. We had an increase in library circulation last year. We had over a million items, we had 1.3 million items circulating from our bookshelves, our books, and from our website last year, which is a slight increase from 2018. And we had 218,000 items borrowed, as well as almost 430,000 libraries to our library. In 2019, we started a new resources program. We did a light up the library tremendously, and we now have free fax and邮递 services for any residents in Johnson County that can come to us and get free fax or email. We also added a VHS conversion station, so we can have old VHS tapes, you want to digitize, bring them to our library. And we had an award for Sue Salamone, the Department of Branch librarian, she was an outstanding librarian in Indiana back. And we had a award for Sue Salomon, even for Clark Clement Branch Library, and she was an outstanding librarian in Indiana back in twenty nineteen. If we get a Clark Clement Branch, we have an update on our construction project. We hired an architect from Cleveland, Ohio. We're going to get a local, we can add one to her, and we are eight hundred and one architects. And we're going to access the process of purchasing land and hiring a construction manager. During the pandemic, our libraries may be closed, but our staff are working hard to expand our online programming program. All of our parking lots have free Wi-Fi, internet access, and we were connected to everyone via telephone and were providing emergency backup and other resources for residents who need supplies for unemployment, F F A benefits, and much more. Looking to start providing roadside service just as soon as we're ready. Thank you guys for being great neighbors and letting me work notes about the Johnson County Club of Libraries. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Littner. Just so you'll know, the, the audio was a little distorted. I was able to make out most of it, I think. Did, did you have a report that you had submitted that we could get?
It's an infographic. We just sent it today. So I'm sure you'll be able to receive it via email.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate the work you all do. All right. Part of the council miscellaneous business is we have a proposed meeting date change. As most of you know, we typically have council meetings the first and third Mondays of each month. But on Monday nights before an election, we typically don't have a council meeting. We move that to the Wednesday night after the election. Since the state of Indiana has moved our primary election from May the fourth, I think, to June the second, we would like to rearrange our meeting schedule so that instead of meeting on Wednesday, May fifth, we'll meet on Monday, May the third. Or, yeah, Monday, May, well, whatever those specific dates are, Monday, May sixth, I think. And then on, and then on Wednesday, we'll move the, the meeting from June first to June third. I don't think.
So, Mr. President, May the sixth is Wednesday. That's what you're suggesting?
No, no, we'll move it. It's right now scheduled for May the sixth. I'm sorry. I, I'm not looking at a calendar.
Well, tablet.
May the fourth.
It's, it's currently scheduled for May sixth. We want to move it to Monday, May fourth.
And we normally would, yeah, got it.
Yes. And then the meeting that we have scheduled for June first, which by the way is my anniversary, we'll, we will move to Wednesday. Yeah, thank you. We'll move to Wednesday, June third. So all of you should have received copies of that. Any questions about that?
No, I support Mrs. Campbell's request that we move it from her anniversary to the third.
She will appreciate that. Thank you. So we have, we have a motion to change these two, two dates as presented. Motion, well, Mr. Lexi, I think, made the motion. Mr. Bates seconds that. And we will do a roll call vote on this motion. So roll call on the motion to change the meeting dates as presented.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dyn.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Hill.
Mr. Hill?
Sorry, I, I was muted.
And Hopper.
Aye. All right. Motion passes nine to zero. Anything else from the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the city attorney a question, going back to ordinance twenty ten on establishing the development, the community development block. I'm on a board that may be receiving money from that, and I have abstained on that vote.
You don't actually have a community area interest because you don't personally benefit from it. So I believe it's okay for you to participate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Anything else from the council?
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Like to wish Mr. Coons the best of luck because by midday tomorrow, his life will never be the same.
Oh, that is true.
Good luck.
Congratulations, Brad. We'll be thinking about you tomorrow.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Send pictures of the babies.
Pictures of me, Mike?
Not really.
It will be nice to know that you're all home safely.
Yes, it will. Yes. We'll be, we'll be praying for you tomorrow, especially your wife. So, all right. Anything else from the council?
About we adjourn.
Well, not yet.
I thought if I get to ask about my conflict of interest.
Yeah, well, we, we'll, we'll get to that in a minute. Anything else from the council? All right. Other miscellaneous business, corporation council?
Yes, we have a conflict of interest for Robert Stedter, who's a firefighter and owner of a business called Do It Right Diving LLC, who provides dive training and equipment to the city from time to time, giving us a conflict of interest to disclose that. If you would please move to accept that at the public meeting so we could file it with the state, I would appreciate it.
Hey, do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
By Mr. Hopper. Come on, Mr. Dyn. We're going to adjourn. We got, we got to keep this moving. All right. Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? Seen none, roll call on the motion to accept the conflict of interest as presented.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dyn.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Motion is approved nine zero. Anything from, anything else from the corporation council?
No, thank you.
Anything from the controller's office?
Nothing. Thank you.
Anything with the mayor?
Yes, sir. I would like to just give a huge shout out to the Parks Department for the sign they put together and hung over the Smith Valley bypass. It's very, very well thought of, very well designed, and we've gotten a lot of hits on it about that. And I just want to thank all the police officers, firefighters, E M Ts, and paramedics for the job they're doing for the city during this very rough time. It's been hard on them. It's been very taxing on them, and I appreciate all that they've done.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sure the council appreciates that too. And that, yeah, I agree with you. That sign is beautiful. That is, that is sharp. Looks good. So, all right.
I would also like to thank the other employees. I know that sometimes it's challenging to work at home with children doing e-learning and all. So I just appreciate all that everyone is doing in the city to keep things moving.
I agree. Very good. All right. See nothing else? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.